Good evening, welcome to our town council budget workshop Thursday, August 29th at 6:00 PM. Everybody would, Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lord?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Here.
Member Quorum?
Excellent. Everybody, please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I usually follow the mayor, so I'm happy I remembered all the words. All right, at this time, we'll move the agenda to the floor. Item 1A, proposed budget FY 2024-25, and I'll turn the floor over to the town manager. Town manager, you're recognized.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we are proud to have our third budget visioning workshop. And just explain a little about the workshop, our first budget visioning workshop was held on July 31st. And then we had our second budget workshop, it feels like it was just yesterday, August 29th, I mean, sorry, August 19th. So with that, I'd like to work with the clerk's office, provide a brief presentation. Then we're going to dive into the special revenue funds, which is our third budget workshops, which will lead up to our budget hearing. So with that, thank you, Mauricio. So as I mentioned, tonight is our third budget workshop. Again, this is similar to what we did the first go around, where we just provide an overview to our residents. I'll save some time and, you know, again, this is just when we're incorporated, population, the square area, the median age, household income, and we'll have over 19,000 residents. I think it's important because sometimes we just kind of take those items for granted. So I know we have some folks in the audience and folks viewing as well, so just give everybody an overview. Want to spend a little time here with, just to remind everybody about our mission statement that we take very seriously. The mission statement reads that the town council will work to make Cutler Bay an excellent place to live, work, and play. Cutler Bay's government will be creative, responsive, and respectful, and providing innovative and cost-effective services to our community. This mission statement was important enough that we actually adopted it via resolution 1264. Our vision, Cutler Bay will be recognized as one of the most desirable communities in South Florida to live, work, and play. Its schools, homes, parks, and culture facilities offer an enrichment environment for children, adults, and senior citizens alike. And its local economy encourages outstanding companies to work, sorry, to want to be here to do business here. From our strategic master plan, the financial stability and sustainability strategic goals. The fiscal viability of the town is a primary concern of its elected officials, its residents, and its employees. Short and long-term financial stability is critically important to ultimate realization of the town's vision. This service area has four components, fiscal responsibility, fiscal transparency, capital building programs, and growth management. As I mentioned, we had a series of workshops. We had one July 31st, August 19th, and we're having our third one tonight on 29th. These workshops, as I mentioned before, they're not state mandated, it's just something we do in Cutler Bay to give the opportunity to, for the council, the members of the audience, and the members that are watching at home, provide them an idea of where we're going with our budget. And as we get into it, you'll see that posted on our website are the actual budget worksheets that are used by each department. So as I mentioned before, the residents have what we have, what I have, and what you have. The budget hearings are state mandated, we have to have two per state. Our first one is going to be on September the 10th. And as well as our second one will be on September the 24th. All the budget workshops are scheduled to be at 6 o'clock here in the town council chambers. How do we get the word out? We published the message on our July 24th e-news that went over, out to over 4.8,000 residents. It worked up in the hearings. We also use the center pages with our friends from Community Newspaper that was published on the week of August the 19th. We also posted the meetings on our main website. We also displayed it on our electronic message boards. We have two in town, Kirin Boulevard, 107th Avenue, Marlin Road, and Old Cutler Road. And since our last budget workshop, we've actually had discussions with, what we call it during an open mic night that we hosted on August the 26th in the town council chambers. And then last, yesterday, we performed it at East Ridge as well. Both had great turnout. So part of the process that we do, you know, was early on, is setting the ceiling mileage rate that was done, performed by the council via resolution 24-53. We set the ceiling mileage rate of 3.006 per thousand assessed property value. That is the ceiling. I want to highlight the fact that our current mileage rate is 2.8332. The resolution also provided, set the dates for our budget hearings, September the 10th, as we mentioned, at 6 o'clock. And as well as September 24th at 6 o'clock, both will be held here in the council chamber. Wanted to highlight the fact that our current military of 2.8332 is one of the lowest within Miami-Dade County. That's why I wanted to highlight all the different cities here. And you can see where we've always told folks that you get a lot of bang for your buck in Cutler Bay. Particularly, you know, look at the property values of some of the municipalities or friends that are ahead of us with some of those low mileage rates. So we, you know, we're right up there in terms of efficiency, as well as bargain pricing, as we call it, for the mileage rate, 2.8332. Our fund balance, this graphic here shows you our fund balance, you know, reserves, as we call it. We've done a great job in terms of building that back up. You can see there's some of the low that was there when the economy took a turn, and we now have a healthy reserve of 26, over $26 million. And that's going to help us with our bond rating and ability to complete some of our major projects that we have throughout town as well. History of our military, as you can see, this is going back for the last 10 years. We are going to be proposing, even though we set the mileage rate ceiling at 3.006, we're going to be proposing to keep the mileage rate stagnant, the same at 2.8332, which we're very proud of keeping it the same for the last three years, as you see there for the last, this report came from our CAFR report from our external auditor. So that's something that we wanted to show the council and the public. And again, just, you know, briefly, our, the way that we operate, we have obviously a mission statement, our core values, we have obviously, you know, town council, we have the charter officials, and we have the directors. That's something we wanted to add to the slide here because sometimes folks just don't know who we are, believe it or not. And, and, you know, thank you, Rod Gibson, our communication manager, because now we've actually, anywhere you have a public lobby in our town and parks, we've actually posted this informational board here. Organizational chart, number one, starts off with the town residents. Then obviously the mayor and council, the three charter officials, town clerk, town attorney, town manager. And then we have the rest of the staff that works for the town manager, and we actually have some contract services there. So again, just kind of setting the table for our org chart. Our second budget workshop overview, I just want to provide that a quick overview because we had, held that on August the 19th. Just as a quick recap, myself and the finance director, Robert Dodario, went over the revenues that we have. This was the actual excerpt from the budget workshop. Then we dove into each department and the way, just to kind of read this one here, is that you have the actual adopted and proposed year's budgets. Then we also have significant changes that are there. So each department, we drilled down under each department there. Town clerk's department as well. Similar worksheets for the general garment, and you can see where we have significant changes there that were actually coded. As well as, you know, the budget worksheets. Finance department. Town attorney. Community development. Public Works. Police Department. And Parks and Recreation Department. So tonight's workshop, we're going to deal with the, what we call the special revenue funds. That includes all of our different projects that we have that are funded through grants, as well as our stormwater utility. So with that, the clerk can just go right into the special revenue funds. Okay, I think we have our finance director, Robert Dodario, on the line too. Just to make sure we got Robert.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. There we go. You're good. You're coming in loud and clear, Robert. So if we could just kind of walk us through the special revenue fund, revenues thinking.
Sure. So the main special revenue fund is on the screen right now. In this fund, we record the second local option gas tax, which is allocated towards capital type items, and which we've been using on our sidewalk repair and replacement program. We also use this fund to account for impact fee collections. The only, on the expenditure side, basically what we do is when we use these funds, we don't expend them in this fund. We transfer them to the fund in which they're going to be used. So I can't see it on my screen. I don't know if you could scroll down more, but... So for this year, we're transferring $200,000 of the local option gas tax to the general fund to be used for sidewalk repairs and replacements. As of this projected budget, we're not planning or budgeting to transfer any of the impact fees in this upcoming fiscal year. So this fund basically collects the local option gas tax, the second local option gas tax, the impact fees. And then when we use them on projects, we transfer them out of this fund to the fund where they're going to be expended. So it's just kind of a pretty simple, simple fund. The other special revenue funds are for specific projects. Okay, I don't see them.
There we go.
Okay. Okay, so the first one on the screen is the recurring children's trust grant. It's now combined, it's now a combined grant, and it covers the after-school program and the STEM camp in the summer. It was combining into one grant fund allocation of 228,000. The environmental fund is a new fund we're setting up this year. We're going to be using it specifically to account for the grant we received for the rehabilitation of the property on Old Cutler Road and Southwest 184th Street. We are matching that with $250,000 of general fund monies to provide a total expenditure of 500,000. This is what we refer to internally as the Buffer Land Project. Rob, I don't know if you want to mention anything as to what we're actually going to be doing on that project?
Sure. Thanks. Thanks, Robert. As Robert mentioned, this is for the eight and a half acres and mayor council members, this is the one that it's adjacent to the over 200 acres from South Florida Water Management District. Many of you participating in some of our master planning phase there with the StanTech, where we had environmental cleanups, they were also at our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and we also have them in Wings Over the Bay. In fact, we called for a council workshop just before September 18th council meeting at 5 o'clock to have the council collectively in a session, I mean, provide us their general comments on the plans. The plans are almost done. And I think the next phase after that with the consultant will be to bring it before the town council during our October 16th council meeting and formalize the master plans, similar to what we did with Legacy Park via resolution. Now, I could tell you, since our last workshop, we've had some great news. What's the great news? In between this process now, we submitted this eight and a half acre restoration, without the master plan, but a restoration, just enough that we know through FDEP. And our project was one of only a handful of project that DEP has selected to submit formally for a federal appropriation through NOAA. As you've heard us say before with Jim Davenport from Dawn Run Associates, that there's a lot of federal grants that are available. I have been pushing and we've been working closely with the community to finalize the master plan. I think we're at the home stretch now, and the fact that now our pre-adopted master plan, if that makes sense, right, has been selected from DEP to move forward to NOAA, that is great news. As Robert mentioned, we have a $250,000 grant from the state, and we're matching $250,000, so that's $500,000. Our first priority, number one, is to develop the master plan. Second part is going to be obviously putting the perimeter fence around there, as we call it internally, that I call it the crab roof fence, if you know such a thing. All right, no, there's such a thing. And then obviously, remove the invasives. And many of you have been out there with us and doing the restoration project, and over 90% of those trees are invasive. We wanted to make sure and follow the vice mayor's suggestion when we did Legacy Park of putting up a big sign, "Coming soon", before we start removing the trees, because we have to work through that process with Miami-Dade County Durham. So I know it's a long explanation, but I want to give the council a preview because that's some great news that our project's been selected. It's going to move forward to the next step with NOAA. So thank you, Robert.
Okay. The next fund is the CITT fund, which is one of our recurring funds. It's the fund we use to account for the PTP cert tax monies. As you can see, the balance has grown over the years, close to, we're budgeting close to $3 million for CITT cert tax funds in the upcoming year. Most of the CITT cert tax funds are spent in what we call two buckets, transportation projects and transit projects. And we also use it to transfer out to other funds to work on various projects, like a lot of this. And the transfer outline is money is going into the JPA for Franger Road as our contribution. But for the transportation products in the upcoming year, we're budgeting $25,000 for intersection improvements on, at the intersection of Southwest 92nd Avenue and Southwest 215th Street, as well as some traffic calming projects. And on the transit side, we're budgeting for the cost of our one circulator bus that's been in service for many years, as well as the $50,000 transit corridor study. We're continuing to budget that until such time as the county, the CITT people indicate that the study is going to not be done. As far as we know, we still need to keep that set aside. Again, as I mentioned, the transfers out is the bulk of the expenditures from this fund historically. And it's going, it's, the transfers out go into other projects, I mean, other funds to provide for other projects. But this particular one, like I mentioned, is going primarily to the Franger Road JPA fund, which we'll get to shortly, but like 4.3 million of that amount is going into that fund to match, to provide for the county share of that project. Next fund is the transit fund, and that's the fund where we're accounting, we're using to account for the on-demand Go Connect grant. That grant funding is winding down. This budget was based on assuming the grant, the next grant fund monies that are coming, available to us, don't start, I believe, until July of 2025. So that's why we're only budgeting $75,000 of grant funding for next year. And the rest is coming from our PTP fund monies to support the services. The Franger Road JPA fund is being paid in large part by Miami-Dade County, transferring funds to us. And our match money is going to pay for enhancements and construction management type costs. The construction is budgeted, 8.5 million of construction is budgeted for the upcoming fiscal year. The transportation fund is the construction of a roundabout on Southwest 200th Street and Southwest 103th Avenue, for which we have a $362,500 grant. And we're providing the rest of the funds from our PTP monies for a total projected price of $678,550. The ARPA fund, much like the CITT fund, is basically a fund that doesn't record expenditures, per se, rather transfers its money out to fund projects in other funds. This $5.9 million that's being budgeted to transfer out in fiscal year 25 is going into the stormwater fund to support construction projects, finishing up design projects, and that sort of thing that are ARPA eligible. And I believe that's the last special revenue fund.
And before we go to the stormwater, I just wanted to thank you, Robert, for the presentation before. Again, I think the highlight, the reason why these are separate funds, because we have to account for them separately. But also, I know the council have seen our presentation where we've done an amazing job of funding a lot of our infrastructure projects with zero avant-garde taxes, right? That's why you see this in the special revenue fund. As Robert mentioned, you know, we do, we do a great job, you know, kind of leveraging our PTP money as some of the matching funds right there. So that's why you don't see this in the general fund, the separate accounting side, of course. I just wanted to take a second to highlight that. So thank you, Robert.
And the last fund we budgeted for the upcoming year is the stormwater fund. So this is on the expenditure side. In addition to the staff costs, the project costs, a lot of them say zero, but they have their arc. If you look, I don't know if we're going to go through the detail department sheets, but a lot of these line items that show zero really have activity, but it's zero because it gets transferred to the balance sheet as a capital, capital cost. In the stormwater fund, you don't record capital costs on the quote-unquote income statement. So it's not treated as an expense, it's really an asset. So we track it in, during the year, we track it in these line items, it makes it easier for staff. And then at the end of the year, when I do the closing, you know, I transfer the appropriate amounts to the, to the balance sheet accounts, whether it's construction in progress, or if it's a completed project, you know, to the, to actually to the appropriate fixed asset lineup, line items, drainage projects, or whatever improvements, infrastructure improvements. So while these say zero, when we go through the detail sheet, you'll see there's activity. Some of them are zero. We're not planning to do work on some of these things in the upcoming year, but some of them, we do have activity. The professional services, the biggest out of that, out of that million dollars, I believe it's roughly 925,000 or 925,000. The, does, 920, roughly 923,000 of that million, 78,000 relates to the Marlin Road design phase. And that's fully funded by, we have a $520,000 state appropriation. We have a $430,000 TAP grant. And we're also committed to providing 95,000 of PTP match funds for the 520,000 state appropriation. So this is mostly covered by, that million dollars is pretty much mostly covered by grant funding. I don't know, Rob, I think it might be, instead of looking at this, I think it might be easier to go through the detail, department detail sheet, so that council could see what we have in some of these accounts. Because just looking at that, it's so zero, it doesn't really give them an indication of what's in there.
Yeah, we're going, right now I've got a lot of work in the clerk's office if we could get those details. For some reason, it's not here in this book, but I know we have it. So just give me a, give us, give me a couple minutes here for a second. All right, well, you know what we could do? If I'll find out from Mauricio, Mauricio, if we could, if we could, once we could find those details, just give me a signal. Okay, but can we go back to my PowerPoint presentation? Let's take a pause here for the stormwater one. And if we go back to my PowerPoint presentation, because I want to talk a little bit about the trim notices and that were just mailed out. Well, I'll give the clerk, you know, in fairness to them, a couple minutes to find that. Okay. So Vice Mayor, members of council, just this week, folks have been receiving their, what we call a trim notice, truth and mileage rating. Notice, and let me see if I can get. Okay, so this is actual, an actual notice that was received. I mean, as I mentioned there, the Foley number 36 is our town municipality's number, so it's 36. So we blocked off, obviously, the name and address there. Cutler Bay, you see highlighted there, in this particular situation, we have the property that's been assessed at $150,000. And then this year, the new assessment will be six, we'll go through that, there it is. Okay, I do have a clicker. It shows what this property was paying last year, based on the 2.8332. So this particular property was $425 to municipality. This year's assessment went up to $156,000. This is what we call the rollback rate. And that would have been the taxes for the rollback rate. The county property appraiser will publish the trim mileage based on the ceiling rate. And I'm going to get that in a second now, because we did base our budget based on the ceiling. And in this particular situation, we would have had, if it was based on the ceiling, this property owner, based on the new property value, and the 3.006 would be an increase of 4318. Now, as mentioned during our second budget workshop, town staff, we're developing the budget at 2.8332. Yes, it's advertised at 3.06, but we've been very vocal about bringing that to the 2.8332. One of the first actions for doing the first budget hearing will be for the council to make a motion to lower to the 2.8332, so that we could have that done there. My PowerPoint. Okay. So this same trim notice, based on the 2.8332, and thank you, Rod, for these graphics, because it makes it easier to follow, right? Inserting the 2.8332 there, that number now will go to $442. That number now, compared to last year's taxes that this particular owner paid based on the assessment, is now $17.10. So using the 2.8332, using the snapshot of an actual resident, a trim notice, it will be an increase of 1710. Now, obviously, it's going to be different for a lot of different properties, but I want to kind of reflect how that subtle change in that from 3.006 to 2.8332, it went from difference of, again, you know, $43, what we just mentioned, to $17.10, and that's what we're building our budget on. So one of the things that, what the trim notice does is provides each resident the notice. There it is, September the 10th at 6:00 PM at our town council chambers. The second notice for the second budget hearing will be published in Miami Herald, as per state law requirements, and we call that the large ad. But everybody's getting their notice there for September the 10th. And then obviously, this time, this year, we're going to have the stormwater utility, it's going to be on your, on the, on the tax bill of, you know, $90. This particular resident I see there, it says Lakes by the Bay Community Development District, right? So a lot of times people say, hey, we pay a lot of taxes, but I think the biggest thing is that what actually comes to the town. Now, going in regards to stormwater utility fee, we've spoken about it before. We went from the billing, Wassa billing, to the unified billing method. So we went from the same $90 that was being built in Miami-Dade County water sewer bills is now being transferred to the property appraiser. That right there saves approximately $117,000 per year, just a different entity billing for us. One of the hidden treasures, as I said during my open mic night, is that since it's included in your property assessment bill, you actually, if you pay your property assessment before, November, you get a 4% discount. That wasn't allowable, obviously, with the Wassa bill there. It's the same $7.50 you're paying before. Now it's just on the unified billing method there, and this hearing is going to be, the first part is going to be on September the 10th meeting. So part of those state law requirements is that we mailed out 14,000 notices. And thank you, Vice Mayor, for assisting. We actually had an informational video there with the Vice Mayor and myself. And I think that number's a little bit outdated. I think we're up to almost 6,000 views for that. And that was, so people understand it, it's not a new fee, it's a fee that's being put on to the trim notice and it's taken away from Wassa. And we also part of state law published in the notice at the in the Miami Herald on August the twenty first. So again, one of the things that we wanted to highlight is that we, in our commitment for transparency, we've held, you know, three budget workshops. Most importantly, all three budget workshops have all three agendas that have been placed there. So in case somebody missed it, they could also watch the video recording of the this meeting and the meeting prior and the in the visiting. And then we have our hearings coming up on September the tenth, as well as September twenty fourth at six P M. In our council chamber, as mentioned during the and the resolution, as well as what you see advertised in the trim notice. So I know I have that last slide there question, so I don't know, Mauricio, if we have the the worksheets. Okay. And I apologize, Mayor, my council members, with the worksheet that that we're looking for, the detailed worksheets for each account on the Stormwater.
Well, I I just want to let you know, if we don't get out of here on time, I'm never going to hear the end of it from the mayor. Yeah, I think he set me up too.
Mauricio, were we able to find finals? Okay, Robert just said he could email them to you if you can't find them on the M drive. Would you like him to do that or?
To be, I'm not sure which folder the sheets are in.
Okay, all right. So Vice Mayor, if I could ask for maybe if we just take like a five minute break and come right back, I just didn't want to have the silence for like five minutes. I mean, we'll we'll get the worksheets there and I apologize.
No, no, understood. I don't know, I certainly can ask the the council too. I mean, how important are the details? I mean,
Vice Mayor, they're they're not, we could go back if Mauricio, if you go back, can we just go back to the summary sheet for Stormwater? What I could do, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, and I certainly apologize for that, is what we could do is once we could upload this agenda again on on our website and make sure that we attach those worksheets.
Were these worksheets included in previous agendas?
They, no, because we're just talking about the worksheets now for Stormwater Utility. Okay, so if we go back, Mauricio, scroll down a little bit, just go back to the summary sheets there, the summary. Sorry, yeah, you're down my up. There you go. So what this is, Vice Mayor, council members, is it will break down each one of these categories in a worksheet that we have. So certainly, what I could certainly do is upload that after, you know, the meeting to our website. We're still going to have the hearings on September the tenth. And if there's any questions from from residents or what have you, they could certainly, you know, contact us or they could simply go visit to our website and they could download the sheets. Oh, it looks like we have them. Okay, so I bought enough time to bring them up. Okay. We have them there.
This is what Robert said.
Okay, good. So Robert, can you just walk us through the worksheets real quick?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to make that bigger, but so so this is the thirty one hundred account, the professional services. The one that's on the summary sheet for a million seventy eight thousand. As you can see, the big one, the big item on there is the nine hundred twenty three thousand for the Marlin Road Complete Streets Design. And we break down how that's going to be funded. So primarily through through grant funding and PTP. Because we had a match a portion of the state appropriation. And then we can, let's just go tab by tab, Mauricio, unless the council has any questions on this one, any specific activity that's listed on here, but these are are pretty much, except for the two items that are design related. The the other ones are pretty much recurring every year, recurring items in the budget. Thirty one oh five is we're using for the Stormwater Master Plan, but that's going to be completed this year, so there's no budget for that next year. Thirty one ten, we're using that for design of the ARPA funding design of Lakes by the Bay area. So we are budgeting to spend a hundred and seven thousand on that this year. But as I mentioned to you, at the end of the year, whatever we accumulate, I transfer to the balance sheet. So that's why the summary sheet it shows a zero, but we are expending some, budgeting to expend some funds for design. Thirty one fifteen is the account we're using for the ARPA design of the Bel Air area. And we are expending some money on that design in in the upcoming fiscal year. Thirty one twenty should be the, yes, the Saga Bay Design utilizing ARPA funds. We're budgeting ninety thousand dollars for for the upcoming year for that design. Thirty one twenty five is the Cutler Ridge Drainage Product, Cutler Ridge Drainage, Cutler Ridge Pines Drainage Product Design. We're budgeting sixty two thousand for the upcoming year on that, finish up the design. Thirty one thirty we're using for ARPA funding of the Southwest two oh seven Street and Southwest eighty fifth Avenue Design. Again, we're budgeting to spend twenty one thousand on that. Thirty four hundred is the main contractual services account. The items that are in here are basically recurring type expenditures that we have in Stormwater for the cleaning of the Stormwater System, the canal maintenance, which we pay to Miami Dade County via in a local. As Ralph mentioned, the Stormwater Billing Fee now, now that it's being billed on the as a non avalorm item on the property tax bill, we're budgeting a lower expense than what we've had in previous years when the Miami Dade Water and Sewer was doing the billing and collection for us. This also includes swell maintenance. We have N T M P D S monitoring, right of way tree planting. These are things that we have a budget recurring every year. Thirty four thirty contractual services, utilizing utilizing ARPA funds for Lakes by the Bay area. As you can see, that one is zero because we're not anticipating any construction in fiscal year twenty five. Thirty four thirty five is for the ARPA funded Bel Air area. That one, we are budgeting construction to start and and substantial construction of seven point two million dollars. So at the end of the year, whatever we accumulate, that'll get, that'll get transferred over to the balance sheet as a capital asset. Thirty four forty is ARPA funding of contractual services for the Saga Bay area. And as noted there, we're not anticipating any contract construction for the upcoming year. Thirty four forty five is ARPA funding for contractual services Caribbean Boulevard, Southwest eighty seven Avenue, Southwest one eighty four Street. That's not anticipated to start in fiscal year twenty five. Thirty four fifty is the Canal Bank Stabilization Project Design, and that's being funded with the Stormwater Fees. Thirty four sixty is the Southwest eighty second Avenue, I'm sorry, Drainage Improvement Project, the construction is anticipated to start. One point two, almost four point three million budgeted, being funded with the grant, our PTP funds and ARPA funding. Thirty four sixty five this is our Cutler Ridge Pines Drainage Construction Portion using ARPA funds. Approximately two point two five million anticipated to be spent in fiscal year twenty five. Thirty four seventy again, this is the ARPA funding for the I'm sorry. Would would the designer was was paid, being paid for by grant, seventy thousand, and the balance is coming out of Stormwater. Thirty four seventy five this was previously the Buffalo Land Project that we talked about earlier in the special revenue fund. Last year, we had that in the Stormwater Budget, but we moved that to the special revenue fund this year to to move it out. It's now, as we mentioned, it's in the environmental fund. Forty, that's the basic, this is travel, the standard travel account for conferences and training. It's pretty recurring items for the Stormwater Staff to keep up up to date with their certifications. Forty one I don't, so now that we're doing the uniform method of billing for the Stormwater Fees, we have to have annual mailings, so that's being budgeted for here, while the the postage part is being budgeted for here. And the the printing of the notices is being budgeted for in another account that we'll get to in a minute. Forty four hundred is rentals, not non budgeted for the upcoming year. Forty six, the vehicles, that's just an estimate for vehicle maintenance repairs of the Stormwater Trucks. Forty seven is the printing account, so this would include the printing for the non avalorm advertising, as well as the public outreach materials that are required for the M P D S floodplain activities. Fifty one is office supplies, consistent with prior year. Fifty two is operating supplies. Just miscellaneous supplies for tools, boots, safety equipment. Fifty two is fuel for the trucks, budgeting a little bit less, gas prices are starting to come down. Fifty four, dues and subscriptions. Again, these are, some of these are for attending conferences and and such for the Stormwater Staff to maintain their certifications. Fifty nine is depreciation, which is, as I mentioned, a lot of our capitalized assets, these main big drainage projects, they get cap, they get capitalized as improvements and then depreciated. So the Stormwater Fund records that depreciation expense. Sixty four, capital outlay, there is none here because capital items in the Stormwater Fund are recorded on the balance sheet, not in the income statement. Seventy one is principal payments. So we have, the debt that we have are the fleet rentals, the Gatsby eighty seven leases for the trucks, as well as the Stormwater Bonds that we pay via in our local with with the county. So this is the principal portion, and seventy two is the interest portion. Same thing, the Gatsby eighty seven vehicle rentals and the Stormwater Bonds, this is the interest expense. Seventy three is nothing, it's just miscellaneous other debt service we have done. And those are the department detail sheets for Stormwater.
And thank you, Robert. Great, great presentation. I think Mayor, Members of Council, what you see here on the screen is our actual worksheets that are that are developed by the departments. So again, I go back to full transparency what we have now. One of the things that I think that we're just talking amongst our staff today is I'm going to, and I'm going to have a couple, add a couple more slides to the budget hearing presentation is is how to read some of these charts that we have here, you know, the the worksheets, similar to what I did with the trim notice, right? It's just kind of like, I think it's a good example because for us, we do it all the time. And I think just for for residents is maybe making it easier, almost like a how to read, you know, what do these columns mean, et cetera, et cetera? Because because we want to make sure that people understand how to read it. So that way, because a lot of times we just put it up and this is what we did. So you'll see a couple more slides that we're going to work with our our communications manager or a town clerk to put in some more slides when we get to the budget hearing. So that way people understand, because we'll go by these budget worksheets really, really quick. But I think it's it's good just to spend a couple minutes just with the little red lines like we just did with the trim notices to make it easier for residents to read. So again, that's just something that we want to continue to tweak as we do every year. So thank you, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, certainly we're available for any questions and certainly apologize for a little glitch at the end here, but at least we 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 grind it through.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ralph. Appreciate it. Now open the floor for questions from the council. No, hearing or seeing no questions? On the on the dais? Then we'll bring this meeting to a close. Meeting is adjourned.